If I could have an acceptance of the agenda, please. So move and a motion and a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First, are there any walk-ins tonight? Okay, not seeing any. Soon as Tricia is ready, I guess that's up next, the report from the town administrator.
Thank you. I have a number of items, so many that I listed them, so I'll try to be as brief as I can when I got through them. First, I'd like to publicly announce that we've settled two union contracts for the professional staff and the support staff in town. The board voted to ratify these contracts at their last meeting, an open session, but I did want to take a moment in my report to extend my thanks to the union negotiating teams for both the professional staff and the support staff. It was a mutually beneficial and respectful process with both sides articulating their needs, and I think that the four-year agreements that we reached with both of those units benefit our employees and the value that we have with them working for us, but also for the town in moving the town forward and creating economies of scale. So I particularly want to thank the negotiating teams, as I mentioned, they're for four years, and the cumulative cost of living adjustments are 1.5, 1.75, 2, and 2. That brings four out of five contract settlements we have, and we're still negotiating with one remaining union. But again, I just want to publicly acknowledge both the bargaining teams. The second thing is that you're in the process now of, Lorraine has started, annual appointments. We've changed the process a little bit this year as far as asking for much more information from board chairs about any members that are interested in reappointments. But we also want to publicize even more than we did last year and encourage people to apply for any interested boards or committees they would like to serve on. I think often times if people see that there aren't any vacancies, that they don't put in their names for interest, and we really want people to feel free to express their interest in any boards or committees. Their, a letter of interest can just be sent to the selectman's office. There's, the, an article will be put in the Mariner soliciting people to indicate their interest. You will start doing your appointments the end of May, and as we get the information back from board chair. So I just wanted to announce that we're in there.
Just on that point, Tricia, I'd also like to know from the board, or the commissions or committees chairs, of their members, I guess you could say attendants, I'd like to know whether they've actually gone or not, and how many they've missed. I think that's very important for reappointment.
That's on the form.
And I think it's, you bring up a great point. Just because someone was on the board last year or last term does not mean that they're automatically on the board for the next term. So if you are interested in something, a lot of people would like to serve on two different boards. So it may be an opportunity to move someone somewhere else and move other people in. So if you're interested, please apply.
I don't want to get you bogged down, but while we're on the subject, we sometimes stick to the six-year rule, sometimes we don't. So is that something that we might want to ask Tricia and Lorraine to ask?
Yeah, we can note that, yep.
You know, I mean, sometimes, at times for different reasons, you know, we look the other way or just continue.
Well, that's another reason we're encouraging people, as Tony said, to apply even though there might not appear to be a vacancy. Because of the six-year rule, sometimes folks have gone over because there hasn't been any interested folks to step up as and indicate an interest.
Great, thanks.
The next item is the revenue committee. I, under the charter, have the ability to appoint ad hoc committees to report back to me on certain town actions. I've asked three people to serve on the revenue committee. This is the very specific committee that the boards talked about in the past to look at ways to write down the cost of the public facilities master plan. We're getting close in December to looking at the public safety building and the new middle school. So the revenue committee is charged with looking at all town revenues and expenditures and debt in a way to see how we can minimize the total cost of that project to the taxpayers when we're finally ready to go. It's being chaired by former selectman Joe Norton, who's head of municipal bonding at Harbor Coastal Bank, Jeff Burns, who works for Morgan Stanley, I believe, who's on the advisory committee, and Dave Capell, who is the chair of the capital planning committee and works for Merrill Lynch. So they're outfitted not only by their own career work in terms of looking at these long-term revenue and debt scenarios, but also have a familiarity with town government and what the town is dealing with in terms of other monetary issues. So they will be meeting and reporting back their findings. Nancy will provide any information that they need, and I'll keep you updated. The Department of Revenue study, as you know, we have the Department of Revenue doing a management study looking at two very specific areas. One is the organizational structure of the town, and the second is the timeframes associated with town meeting and the budget cycle and the operating budget. Two folks from DOR were here all day today. They've met with myself, Sheila, all the department heads, the finance director, met with Sean as the board chair, Mara Curran as the chair of the advisory committee, Mr. O'Toole met with them, phone conversation with Mr. Daney, and they'll be following up with phone conversations with Mr. Vignani and Mr. Murray. So that, that's their field work. They also left with a variety of documents, the charter, the bylaws, the town budget, and will be working on a draft report as well as follow-up information over the next several months. You included in the packet, I believe, is the items pending, which you haven't seen before, town meeting. Now that town meeting's over, we sort of get back to the rest of the business of the town and some things that have been on the back burner. So that gives you a snapshot of what we're working on. But along those same lines, I did want to advise the board and publicly state that I will be gone for the next two weeks, starting, next two weeks, the next meeting from May 12 to the end of May. And Al Bangert will be acting town administrator during my absence. So we met today, and he'll be working on some of these issues as well. And the final thing that I want to talk about that's not on the schedule is town hall will be closed from 8:30 to noon tomorrow for mandatory staff training, for Alice training. And that is for everybody in the building to be trained by the Situate Police Department in active shooter situations. I should know the acronym for Alice, it's alert, inform, counter, and evacuate, I believe. And I probably missed a letter, but we will be doing that for this building tomorrow. The chief of police feels very strongly that staff in every public building receive this training, and it's already been done in some of the schools. So we will reopen at noon and apologize for any convenience. That's been a web blast, and I just tweeted it, but very important training that. I commend the chief for insisting that we do. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions? I saw some of you guys circle and stuff, underline and stuff.
No. Just a couple of quick things. I think this is great, Tricia, when you give us this, you can see all the pending stuff that we're working on. A couple of things that we're on here, just for dates, we're going to get our tablets on next meeting.
Yes.
I think that's great, so we're going to be transitioning to try and be paperless. Lorraine, I'm sure you got your hands full with that. The wind turbine data sampling, do you know when that is going to occur again?
Well, first of all, folks may have noticed the turbine hasn't been operating the last few days, but should be operational tomorrow. They had a part go. But the data sampling, again, the wind conditions have not been right under the original protocols. I know the Board of Health met a few meetings ago to consider expanding some of those protocols. I don't know what the status of that is, but I can check.
Okay. But it is still in the way it works?
It's still, right. It's still ongoing, yes.
I just, on that point, it just seems like it's taking, I'm just only putting my, an awful long time to find the optimum sampling, and yet they were able to get the sampling before they actually, when they did the testing, before they, it went up. It's just, at some point, we got to figure something out because it's been over a year.
Sixteen months, I think.
And I feel bad for the residents up in the area who've been waiting on this and relying on it. So I don't know what...
If I'm not mistaken, didn't they change the speed and wind direction? And they changed some of the parameters so they could get a test done? And I thought they did a test, but I could be...
They've done one test, but it's not, not nearly enough. The sampling, it's not general sampling, it's a very narrowly defined sample when the wind direction's a certain thing. So what's happened is because it's taken so long and the conditions haven't presented themselves, there, there's been a request to widen the protocols for the sampling. And that's what I don't know what the status is with the Board of Health, but I'll find out.
Yeah, I agree with John.
I'm only saying, because I'm thinking like in the next two months, then we should have some kind of, somebody coming in because I'm like, is it because all of a sudden the wind hits the right way, then they have to call the engineer? The engineer can't do it because the engineer's on something else, so they can't get the instruments out? I tend to think we really got to figure this out and sample it under the optimum conditions, if, if that's the problem. If the problem is the wind hasn't been blowing in that direction for a year and a half, which I find hard to believe, then, you know, we got to, because I think we owe it to those people.
No, I think it's a great idea to have them come into a meeting, just to give an update.
Yeah.
And the other great thing on here is the RFP that we have for Wi-Fi in the harbor. You know, I know Bill's working on that, and that's in the, you know, when that, I was in the harbor just the other day, and that's going to be such a plus for the citizens and for the businesses down there. So glad to see that's on top of the list.
Then it's Tony?
Yep.
And the only one question I had, then we'll move on, Tricia, was Superintendent McCarthy was going to come in the 13th, or is he coming in?
He has a conflict, they're coming in the 27th.
27, alright, so to give us an update on where they are with their junior high school. Okay, alright, moving on, we have a scheduled item. Well, we're pretty close to on time, with the water conservation week proclamation. John, I see here, is here from the Water Resource Committee. And it's actually, if you would give us an update, and then I'd ask Marty to read it into the record if he doesn't mind.
Okay, except that he got stuck doing it last year. And I think he needs to share it because I actually put five points in there, and I think you need to really scold Selectman Murray not being here because I wrote one for each of you to read. You can work, you know, you can work out your own management between yourselves, but I just want to be fair to Selectman O'Toole here.
Because we're actually drinking water, Sean.
No, I'll read. That's fine.
Probably should not.
Alright, all kidding aside, really, thank you very much for, thank you very much for allowing a few moments of your time on the agenda. My name is John Clarkson, I'm chairman of the Situate Water Resources Committee, and for the past couple of years now, we have been celebrating Drinking Water Week, which next, is going to fall next week, May 4 through 10. We have a couple of things that we want to make sure, we're joining a number of communities across the country in celebrating Drinking Water Week, and we just want the citizens to take a moment to realize what goes into protecting these resources. It's an opportunity for the committee to thank everyone who came to town meeting and your support as well for the new Water Resources Protection District that was recently passed. And the Water Week itself will culminate with a big celebration at the Situate Water Treatment Center on Saturday. May 10, we're going to be offering tours of the facility. There's going to be displays set up about the new Water Resources Protection District if people would like to come by and learn what this means. There is a map here in town hall, we'll have a map down there and maps to distribute to people as well. There's going to be updated information on the pipeline replacement that's going to be beginning, if not this week, next week, I believe. It's already begun? There we go, there's the man. Hey Kevin, how are you? And also, the families who come by will be able to, will be handing out, we have a limited number of water conservation kits available to them so that they can take steps to lower their water bills and help conserve water and protect it for future generations. We'll also have information on some research the North and South River Watershed Association has been doing in conjunction with our water department on increasing the capacity of our reservoir as well as increasing flows to encourage fish habitat into our reservoir. In fact, there's a haring run that was recently refurbished right by the reservoir, and people will be able to go tour that. I want to pick up on your fine town administrators' comments that we as well are looking for members to participate in our committee, and if you'd like to come meet other committee members and talk about what we do, and perhaps some good people from the community would like to join our community, our Water Resources Committee, we would encourage them to do so. So that's, that's pretty much my pitch, and I thank you for considering this proclamation to really start up Water Week with a big bang.
Thank you, John. Alright. Tony, let's give it a stab, a minute?
Sure, go ahead.
Sure. Whereas for more than 35 years, people throughout the nation have celebrated Drinking Water Week, recognizing a unique opportunity for both water professionals and the communities they serve to join together, recognizing the role water plays in our daily lives. Whereas the town of Situate values its precious and limited water resources, and whereas the town recognizes water's critical role in ecological health as well as economic development, and whereas the citizens of Situate have recently adopted a comprehensive water resource protective district bylaw, and whereas the town remains committed to preserving and protecting the quality of a vital water resource for future generations. The Situate Porters Selectmen hereby proclaim May 4 through May 10 to be Drinking Water Week.
Cheers. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Alright, okay, moving on. Next is a one-day liquor license for the Inlee School. Is there anyone here from the school? Scheduled for 7:20. I don't have a problem voting it if they're not here. How do the other members feel?
Move, make a motion?
Sure, I guess.
Move to grant a one-day beer and wine license for lavishly done catering and event planning for an event at the Inlee School on May 17, 2014, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Next is a common vic license to be held at the Quarter Deck from the Lucky Finn Cafe.
And that's, is that the one that was tabled, Lorraine? That one was tabled.
Okay, alright.
That's why you have no information on it.
Alright. A little, it's not a public hearing, I suppose. We, if the board is okay with it, we can go on to the outdoor entertainment license by TK O'Malley's. It's supposed to be 7:35 first. I think there are two processes. First, there was a one-day license, outdoor entertainment license for the sidewalk for an event. Maybe we can start with that.
Tricia, do we have to wait till 7:35, or can we?
No, it's not an advertised public hearing. If the folks are here for it, obviously you can do it.
TK O'Malley's, I see some neighbors and stuff. If, you know, if everyone's in agreement, then we'll, we'll go ahead, and I'm sure we'll be talking about it for a few minutes, so. With the board's permission, why don't we go to the one-day outdoor entertainment patio license for TK O'Malley's, if that's alright?
Sure.
Walter, or anybody would like, would you like to speak on this?
Hi Sean, how are you?
Could you just, I certainly know who everyone is, but if you wouldn't mind identifying yourselves?
Absolutely. Jeff DeLeese from Ornberger Associates. I'm here with Walter Collins, who's one of the owners of TK O'Malley's, and Rich Linehan, who's the GM. Why don't you guys talk about the one-day license, guys?
It's for the coming first Friday, just to have a single singer up front during the early hours.
That's just what I thought, it was first Friday. Anyone else have questions?
Five to P, it looks like from 5:00 PM till 9:00 PM, Mr. Linehan?
Yes.
And it's Situate Harbor Arc Walk, is that really just first Friday?
Sidewalk, right, yeah.
And is it going to be in that indentation?
Albow, correct.
Yeah, so sidewalk still people can pass down and... Great. Move, yeah, move to grant a one-day outdoor patio entertainment license to TK O'Malley's for one acoustical player on May 2, 2014, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM on the sidewalk in front of TK O'Malley, O'Malley's for the Situate Harbor Arc Walk.
Have a motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, okay. Now moving on to the second half, it's an outdoor entertainment license. It looks to me like it was a renewal. You had it at one time, I don't remember.
Yeah, it, it, it was 2001, and the application was filed. They weren't certain whether to put it as a renewal or a new license, but I would think that it's probably a new license.
Okay. I guess I'll open it up to you guys first. The board can ask questions, I'll open it up to the audience, if that's okay.
Sure. What we're planning to do, as you know, the patio out there is probably one of the most beautiful spots to be in, in the harbor on a nice summer night. And essentially, what we're looking to do is, is have some entertainment for, that you can pretty much converse over, dine over, hear one another, nothing crazy. We would like to limit it to three pieces or any combination of three instruments and a singer, but no more than three in total. And the time that we were looking to do this would be Sunday through Thursday until...
What was it?
Well, we're looking Friday and Saturday until midnight. And then Sunday through Thursday until 10.
So when do you want to, give us a full hours, from what time to what time? Sunday through Thursday from?
From noon until?
Noon to 10?
Yep.
And Friday and Saturday night from, until midnight?
That's correct.
Does that necessarily mean that you'd?
I corrected, I think it was until 11 o'clock during the week.
So let's use what's on the license before the board.
Oh, where's?
Which is 11.
On all of them?
On Sunday through Thursday and midnight on Friday and Saturday.
That's the application, and that's what we're seeking.
On the application.
Yes, yes.
So Sunday through Thursday, 12 to 11, and Friday and Saturday, 12 to 12?
Correct.
Does that mean that if I went down there Friday or Saturday afternoon, not necessarily there'd be someone outdoors playing? It just gives you the license to do it?
Right, we don't...
Does it necessarily mean that they're going to have people?
We're not going to have entertainment all the time, we're not a family for that.
Right.
It's just to cover, you know, it might be a Friday afternoon, it might be a Friday night, or, you know, but not a combination of different times, but not consistent every?
Right, okay.
Yep.
Alright.
We feel that this would be an attribute to the, to the harbor businesses. We think that, you know, there's been some competition recently in the harbor, and, and we want to make, you know, we want to make sure and certain that we were able to utilize our patio to the full extent we're able to.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board?
The midnight thing scares me a little bit. I think that's a bit late. Because of the situation where your patio is, I mean, on a nice comp night, you've got houses right across from you. So I think the midnight thing, I think it's, I could see 11. I just, I think midnight would be a little bit on the late side.
The reason why we were going with midnight is that's what our liquor license has for our last, our last service, so.
Right.
But I think you have it anyways, for at least indoors, you have it from 12 to 12.
Inside, yeah?
Inside. Here's where I'm coming from, okay? I'm not adverse to doing it because I think frankly you have an opportunity to maybe augment your clientele, providing them, like I said, with Tesoro, an opportunity to have some nice acoustic music. I think we as a board, at least my position on it is, if it can help your business, I'm willing to help do that, providing it does not impact the greater residential area. Mind you, you're in a business district, so the people who live in the business district have to realize that that's the reason why they live there, and that's the reason why we have a business zone, so that they have to adjust to the businesses. But if it turns out that people are playing, you know, Stairway to Heaven, and, you know, you know, Born in the USA, and, you know, the big heavy rock groups, you know, playing this music, it becomes a problem for them, becomes a problem for us, it's going to be a problem for you. And I think you guys know that. So I think, you know, from my perspective, I have no issues with suggesting that some form of acoustic music on the outside. You've got it on the inside, so you can have your music, you know, whether it's a band or you've got the jukebox. But I'm saying inside, you can close it off, it's quiet, air conditioning's on. But I think from the outside, I'd like to take the same approach we've taken with Tesoro, which was a close-off at 10. So you have the opportunity to be able to perform if there's some kind of acoustic on the outside. I think it was, we had it until, from Wednesdays and, oh wait a minute, Monday through Wednesdays from 4:00 to 10:00 PM, and then Thursday through Sunday, we had from 12:00 to 10:00. The shut-off being 12 o'clock, I mean, being 10 o'clock in the evening.
Yeah, the only, I was thinking about that, I actually looked at that license coming in, and the only thing I could think there is, I'm not sure whether the board took it into consideration, but in the Tesoro situation, that is right on the edge of a, of a business district. Here, we're kind of, you know, I mean, there are, also in that situation, you have many hotel, for lack of a better word, residences above it, and there's some residents on the opposite side. Here, we don't, we don't have that.
I'd agree with you, Jeff, but the only problem is you're on the edge of the water.
Yep.
Sound carries pretty quickly across the water. So the people who are going to be pretty much impacted by it are going to be the ones on first Cliff, and certainly maybe towards Cedar Point, maybe some reverberation can back upwind. So my, the reason why I'm saying it is, I know their neighbors here are totally against it, but I would rather see increments here to see how it goes, how you manage it, and, and say that, you know, certainly from the outside, it shouldn't be any more music at that point until, you know, we see how it goes.
The volume will be controlled by the management, and they'll be on top of that the whole time. The other thing is we serve later, food later than anybody in the town. We serve till midnight. So we're stopping the music, you're saying, two hours before the, even the people can order food, trying to get, to kind of go together with each other, whether it's indoor or outdoor. But we've always served till midnight, we continue to serve till midnight for the food.
You're right. I'm not saying, Mr. Collins, you're wrong. The only reason why I'm worried is that I'd rather see it incrementally happen. You haven't had the license in 13 years, so I would be inclined to say, why not try some smaller steps to see how it goes? You're talking about two hours. You haven't had it for 12 years, 13 years. I would say, test it to see how it is. If we begin to get a lot of complaints, then we'll, we'll discuss it. On the other hand, and I'm not talking about the one person who's going to call and say I complained about it because there are always going to be that type of person out there. But, I don't know, that's just my view on it. I'm only one of four right now, but I just think getting to that first step, let's see how it goes. I mean, we're only off by two hours, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
About one.
Tony, did you want to, before I speak? Are you done?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to negotiate. I want to keep things fair and square for every businesses that are in the harbor. I think it's fair at that point, because then we're going to have somebody come back in and say, well, guess what? Now we want to have something between. I think having kind of a, more of a even keel here approach to it. I mean, the reason why, it sounds to me like you're trying to get music out there till midnight. I'm like, is it booking, is it booking a problem for getting somebody to play, perform from 6 till 10? I wouldn't think so.
Well, we'll find out, I guess.
Because you get a lot of, you get a lot of people down there. I mean, you know us, I will go down there from 6 on, you know, till 7 or 8. I mean, I haven't been into...
Usually four hours they like to play, so if it's 10, then it's 6 to 10. It's, you know, in the afternoon it'd be three, you know, 3 to 7 or something like that. But to get them to play longer hours is... The time they play us, you pay them according to how long they play, so.
Gotcha.
But we're not doing anything with cover charges, any kind of big fans, or any kind of, it's more like Jimmy Buffett, James Taylor, that type of thing.
Yeah. I appreciate, I know, it wouldn't make any sense, you know, because it'll become a problem. And I realize, you guys, I'm not going to tell you who to book, but the hours are just the only thing I'm a little nervous about, that's all. I want to make it work. I want to make it work for you guys, and I know the neighbors are going to be very upset about it. We've gotten some responses, and so I'm just trying to see what would be a good way that's going to be a win-win so that in a year from now, nobody's going to be complaining, and then you might say, you know, can we bump it up? Go that route, but those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, I think, we talked about this when we talked about the inn having theirs, and I was a little reluctant with them because I think there wasn't outdoor entertainment for a number of years because of the complaints and because of the harbor and because of the neighborhoods around. and because of the neighborhoods around there. But once you gave it to them, I think you haven't said, you know, it's gonna open up the door, it'd be unfair not to give it to you for at least the hours of operation that they have. So I agree with John in terms of that. You know, I think if you had three people playing even acoustical music and the wind blowing the right way, it's gonna travel. And there's a lot of children that live in that area and I think, I think there would be complaints. And I think we wanna get in a position where we're not, where we're gonna succeed and we don't get complaints right off the bat and have to cut something short, you know, prematurely. So I think I agree with John in terms of, let's start out with the same thought process that we had going with the inn and let's see how that benefits you and see what the feedback is from the community and then go from there in the future. You know, hopefully, like John said, you do have an indoor license that goes another two hours afterwards. I don't think you're gonna have two bands at one night where they're playing inside and outside so they can, you know, move inside and play on the set or whatever they want in there. So I agree with the hours, you know, to match the hours that we have with the existing outdoor.
But even your setup right now, I'm sorry, you've got the, on the glass wall where it's like, I forget if the doors either bend like a fold, like accordion or whether they are sliders. But I assume you keep the band there, they're gonna hear them out on the deck, then you can close it up, you could still continue to get that extra two hours, Walter, by doing it that way.
The people in the summer wanna be on the deck. It's the open air. We've put plastic liners down along the front of the building, but then you're keeping all the heat in and they're not gonna cause ventilation. So we, you know, try and we'll continue to try doing anything that helps in that manner.
But then you got the A.C. issue. Sorry, I'm just trying to figure out your solution.
All right, first of all, I'll speak for Rick Murray because I had a conversation with Rick Murray today, he called and said that he's, although he's not here, he's in favor of it. The hours, he had a little bit of a concern with, but he didn't specify to me what he'd like to see the hours. So just wanted to put that on the record. My first comment is a question to Rich Linehan. How long have you worked there?
Since nineteen ninety-four.
How many hours a week do you work?
It varies.
Sixty.
When I'm with Walter, I work seventy-plus.
And the reason, and there's a reason I ask these questions and that's because if the residents, anyone has a problem, he's an old stranger, he's there all the time. And if they have a question, they have a problem, he's very accessible. He will have to do something about it. He's not strange, he's not new to this operation here. The summer months are short, all right? Not a lot happens before Memorial Day or after Labor Day. Ten o'clock, I think, you know, looking out there, ten o'clock, I think, is a little early sometimes. Twelve o'clock's a little too late. I might say to split the difference and call it eleven o'clock. But having what John said, you know, if they don't call Rich and they call one of us, then, you know, we're gonna have to call you guys and deal with it. I just think, I was thinking about this since, you know, I read the agenda. You know, there's a fine line and I just think we, you know, we have to help the businesses. It's different than the inn. It's different in a couple different ways. That's closer to the residents sitting in the middle of the room here. It's right beside them. They have residences right upstairs. This is a little different. Yeah, sound can travel, but so can people on their boats and everything else. There's a lot of people, you know, everyone's outside in the summertime. The noise level, the ambient noise level is much higher in the summer, I'm sure, if we walked down Front Street at different times of the night, from summer to winter.
Motorcycles.
Trucks, you know, deliveries, whatever the case is. So I would tend to go with eleven o'clock, maybe ten and eleven. I would split, split the difference. And I'm, you know, I'm just throwing that out there to see what the board thinks. And again, I, you know, I caution you guys and I think it is, it's not midnight, but I, you know, and start there. I mean, we're coming into the summer season now, you know. If it was halfway through the season or if it was in the fall, you know, obviously not much is gonna happen in the fall, winter and spring. But I just think that we need to somehow help these businesses, provide them with some tools to make a go of it. They've been in business a long time and they give a lot back to the community. That's all I have to say. At this point, if we don't have anything else, all right, then I'll open up to the audience. One sec, Tony, I think has?
No, no, I was gonna suggest.
All right, okay, you've got everyone else? Is it Mr. Lynch? Could you just say a name and address, please?
Henry Lynch, fifteen Beaver Dam Road.
Okay.
And the applicant has stated that it's a beautiful spot on their deck down there and they like people to enjoy it. I live at fifteen Beaver Dam Road when there's a loud music, it comes up and I cannot enjoy my deck. And I certainly have feelings for all the business people. We just had a study that said maybe we should do more down in the Green Bush area to get our business and our base up. I'm not trying to hurt anybody that's in business. As a resident, I know we have a trade-off because if there's good business, it affects my tax rate. I'm completely understanding that. But we have loud music, I'd like to know how many decibels are they gonna be playing? And what, that music comes up right between the inn and the White House down the other process, it comes right up onto my deck. And it's aggravating when the music is loud. And you talk about Soros and you gave them a license just recently. When it was there, and it was the Black Dog or whatever it was down there, never once did we hear, the music was not amplified outside so that it was louder off. And never, and I'm on my deck all the time, I never heard them once in all the years that were there. Not one time did I hear them, all the years that they had the music downstairs, whether it was the Brown Boys or whatever it was. We don't, we don't need a lot of noise at the house. We don't need our neighbors to be disturbed. You don't need an eleven o'clock opening. Most of their restaurant people are gone unless it's bar people. What time do they show their food? And we as residents have just as much compassion and want the businesses to do well. We wanted the inn to do well. Remember they wanted to put condos there? We'll do anything to keep that place there. Wonderful neighbors, they're very accommodating. Drop over if there's something wrong, like we would drop over to the manager here and we'd say, hey, this really is not right. We feel that way, but we don't need loud music until eleven o'clock at night. My bedroom picks every day and I can hear the guys on the pier talking. And I bought the house because I wanted to be here, like because I was against businesses. And that's how I feel. Thank you very much.
Thanks. All right, I'll let, everyone will get a turn, a woman over here?
Hi, I'm Adrian Leary, one ninety-nine Front Street. I'm sure you know how I feel about this, I'm very nervous speaking about this. I was here when the dog watch came up, you listened to us, you denied it. You then gave a license to Tesoro, which I was a little confused about. And I told you at the time you turned down the dog watch that TK's would be asking for a license and they have. I don't, I think it's abominable. I wasn't notified about this, I am the closest private residence. I didn't have to be notified, I know that. I found out by accident. I notified as many people as I could, First Cliff people, harbor people, but you're very well aware that the harbor is apartments. We're living there full-time for a hundred and fifty years. I don't really care what TK's does, I just don't wanna hear them. And I can hear them now with their inside license, with their doors open. Business is business. If he can't make a business without outside music, then there's something the matter with the business. I don't think we need one more bar that's hooting and hollering and situate them. That's how I feel about it. And I'll be very disappointed if you go along with it. And I'm not gonna be calling the police or you every night, it's ridiculous. By the time the police get down there, they try, the noise is down, the people have left, I'm wide awake, why would I do that? It shouldn't be up to me to be calling you and the police and saying, oh, I'm wide awake. This should be something as a town, we're trying to make the harbor a better place. You don't go to me and type it and listen to this. Thanks.
Gentlemen, sitting down?
Ed Larry, one ninety-nine Front Street. My wife has told me to be quiet, so I'm risking a lot here speaking. Mr. Daney, you made a comment about the fact that they do have an indoor license and they've got that, they can close their doors and provide the music inside. I'd like to point out, for the last two years, we've been subjected to the fact that they have left those doors open, very clearly open, and their speakers were piled right outside those doors. That is an absolute truth. I went in there and asked them twice and they, I was told, oh, here inside, we've got an inside license. Mr. Linehan can shake your head, but those speakers were right next to those wide open sliders. So there's this consistent pattern of disregard for what's right. You talked about the fact that it's summertime and that's when we have to make money. Summertime is when our windows are open, when we're trying to enjoy the peace of our homes. The fact that I can't have a conversation in my house, he can't have a conversation in his deck, so that they can sell more alcohol. There has to be a point where they have, they deliberately try to skirt the issue. I was appalled when they put those sliders in and I walked in, I saw those speakers there. They have a karaoke in there, they have a DJ in there doing trivia on Thursdays night, Thursday nights. An absolute disregard for their license. Their license says right now, nothing on the patio. So this isn't a renewal we're going to have, it's a change in their license. Is that not a fact?
Since two thousand and one.
Their current license says in capital letters, no entertainment on the patio.
I look at it a little, yeah, right, I look at it a little differently, I guess. I haven't seen those speakers outside, all right? I look at entertainment.
They're not outside, they put them right inside.
I look at entertainment as being entertainment on the patio. That's why I look at it, I'm sorry.
So having the amplifiers blasting out is according, is in accordance to their license?
I haven't seen it, like I said, I haven't seen, I haven't been down there to look at it, okay? There was another hand, yes?
Carol Fitzgibbon, I live on Long Star River in First Cliff. I'm also the vice president of the First Cliff Association. I'd like to just point out that you have this different standard for the Maritime Center. Last year I had a anniversary party, wedding anniversary party on June first and I had the music and the music was skipped to me to boost the teeth to the, in Gate School, the many years and he's also at the Tinkusan and Snuggins, an Irish band. And I was told, and I spent a lot of money on this party, both the decks were tinted and skated, it was weathered, and I was told emphatically that that band could not play on the deck, that it had to play inside and the decibels had to be reduced. And the reason for it was not to disturb the neighbors. And the time cutoff was ten thirty. So that was the understanding and believe me, I wish that they were able to play on the deck, it would've been much nicer, it would've been much nicer for my company, but that didn't happen and that is the policy for the Maritime Center. The other thing that I'd like to mention is that I don't have such a problem with the weekend aspects of this, but I have a great problem with the Sunday through Thursday or Monday through Thursday because people work. Not everybody over at First Cliff or out here is retired. And I have a husband who is a defense attorney and right now he's filing a motor case. When he works, he goes to town, town out, lives in bed at eight o'clock, he gets up at four o'clock and then he stopped appearing again. If there is music until eleven o'clock through the week and that music, and it moves, it crosses right over the harbor, over to First Cliff, we can hear Pollock Way as if it's right in the backyard. It will prevent him and other people that have responsible jobs from working. If they wanna do this on weekends, that's fine. And there is a difference between TK's and the inn. TK's backs really against the harbor and that music will travel. It won't travel as much as the inn and it will fall across the harbor and go over towards the White House. And I think that that's a complete inconvenience and an imposition on those of us who would like to enjoy our decks in the summertime without a battle of the bands, which we're going to get with Pollock Way. And this does not prevent now the Millworf who're doing the same thing. They have decks and that's the next step. So I think I would prefer that the board maybe allow them to just do a weekend to begin with. And if that works out and it's not too noisy and you don't have opposition from neighbors who are saying it's too noisy, it's too late, then maybe they could institute the Monday through Thursday to try that maybe at ten o'clock. But as it stands, I think it's far too broad and I think that the Maritime's policy, if they're making people who live that space not be able to use a van on the decks and have it closed up by ten thirty, they don't think it's fair that you're going to allow TK O'Malley's to do something different.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'll start, all right, okay, no, all right, okay, the woman in the back?
Elizabeth Petit, one seventy-two Edward Foster Road, First Cliff. It, would it be possible to do as Carol said, which would see how it went on a weeknight or a weekend? Because I do think having it seven days a week is a lot, you know, sound carries right across. We can hear the yacht club, I can hear kids splashing in the pool when the wind blows that way or even on a still night. So it seems like a lot to ask us to be subjected to music seven nights a week, regardless whether it starts at ten or eleven. So would it be possible to see how it went, at least for weekends, to see? And also, when they say acoustic, that means that it's not amplified, correct? And you're talking about three pieces plus a singer or three pieces including a singer?
I wrote down three pieces total.
Total, yeah.
And as far as acoustics, I'm not a music person, it has to be. I think with acoustic, something's plugged in?
Well, we were, we were anticipating, you know, perhaps acoustical instruments, but, you know, it's common practice for them to be plugged into an amplifying system. It's not like we're gonna turn it up to ten or, you know, just enough. In other words, the whole concept of what we're trying to do is be able to have entertainment out there, but allow the people who, and the patrons who are enjoying that patio, the ability to actually hear one another and converse. We're not intending to utilize acoustical instruments essentially for electronic purposes. We anticipate that not only would we be, Calypso is one of the concepts that we were thinking, kind of more of a laid-back, kind of Caribbean feel and that has like a little steel drum that's associated with it. So that was something along the lines of what we were, what we were thinking as well. But again, not, this isn't, I mentioned battle of the bands. We're not looking to have full bands, full drum sets, electric guitars, stuff like that. What I wanted to point out also is, you know, we've, while we, while we, while I'm hearing complaints about our indoor facility and what we're doing over there, the subject of this is outside and we have never received a violation of our indoor entertainment license since we've had it. This is a business district and there's probably should, you know, we think that there should be a balance here and we recognize the fact that we share this district with residences. But, you know, we're also allowed to operate this business as of right in this district. And we, you know, we recognize that we have to come before this board as a licensing authority in that regard. But this ought to be something where this board balances out, you know, the interest here. And we're not suggesting that, you know, we're gonna be doing a full-fledged, you know, musical operation here.
And I don't think you will, all right? If I can cut you off there, Jeff, if that's all right, Tony?
I mean, I think, I think what happened was, there's a reason why you haven't had your license for thirteen years because the board stopped allowing outdoor entertainment. And what we did is, a month ago, or whenever the new inn came before us, we discussed it and the board decided to implement that again. And we were hesitant, I know I was, I think a couple other members were, about the time and about the residents and their impact from it. So, you know, that's really what's going on now. Now, it'd be very, it'd be very difficult for us to only give the inn a license and not you a license. And we, I know I talked about that, that this is gonna happen and whoever mentioned in the back is probably right, the Millworf is gonna come up next week and ask for it as well. So now you've got three entities, all with bands, and gosh, you said Calypso. So, now you've got three entities, all with bands, and gosh, you said Calypso, and my heart, I'm like, that's not, that's going to carry all the way to Hingham, you know, with that steel drum. So, I think we really have to make sure that we keep it in tune with acoustic, you know, you mentioned James Taylor and Jimmy Buffett, that's one guy with a guitar just singing and trying to, you know, have harmony for your restaurant. I don't think we want to get this too big, because what's going to happen is, they're going to call, and we're going to revoke all the licenses. I mean, that's, that's what I see happening. So, I think it's really within your guys' good judgment and the other entities' good judgment to do that. And all of these people are hesitant to get up and talk to us right now, which is even more hesitant to call the police on you guys when they do see the speakers, or they do think that it's being amplified louder than they would have intentionally thought. So, I think we just have to be conservative to start this and see where it goes. Because we are, we've changed the dynamics of the harbor, and you are right, it is a business district, and, but all these businesses were fine, you know, not fine, but they were sustaining themselves before we made this judgment a month and a half ago, or what have you. So, again, I would just say, let's be conservative to the start, let's see how it goes, and then, you know, expand it from there. Because it is, it is going to get loud, and there are going to be other people asking for it, and, you know, again, I just, I just see three bands within a block of each other, all fighting for airtime.
Would you consider Thursday through Sunday as an option? I mean, I know you're missing Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, but I mean, I think Thursday through Sunday, you're getting the weekend, and, or, I think that's what, that's what we have for the other. I'm just, they raise a salient point, you know, Thursday through Sunday, I'm like...
I don't think they're going to play on Monday, I mean...
I doubt you are anyway.
You were saying seven days a week.
That's what I'm saying. And you can do it inside, anyway.
St. Patrick's Day falls on Tuesday, then we come in front of the board and say, we're having a, there's another person in the band for St. Patrick's Day through the times, it's almost like, can be like a separate item.
Yeah. I was just looking at St., you've got July 4th, you've got Heritage Day as a weekend, you know, Memorial Day, Labor Day weekend.
So, I was the license, the old license of the outside. We had one incident, a board member came to me and asked me if I minded temporarily turning in a license and if it could be brought up at a later time. The license said accordion and guitar, and it's kind of outdated anyway. So, I said, sure, no problem. But we never did, till now. We went 13 or 15 years, and it was never, we were never in front of the board.
Right.
The board, a member just called me.
Right.
Asked me.
There were a couple of hands out in the audience. Is it all right if we, all right, I'll entertain a couple more, especially the ones I haven't heard from. Okay, I'll start with you in the front, if you'd just identify yourself.
While we're going to be behind Dr. Carson's on Howard High Road, the consequence that concerns me that might happen if you're having loud music at night, the patrons that show up in their Harleys, 10:00 at night, it's already an issue where I live, and I just don't think adding more of that on a nightly basis would benefit.
But it's not loud music. I mean, it's...
I'm talking about the Harleys, when they leave.
No, no, I'm just saying, the music that they're having is going to be acoustical, you know, lighter music.
I know, but I'm also concerned with another component to offering music at night, more Harleys taking off.
I happen to like them, I have one, I'm sorry, it's not real loud.
Well, if you have a Muffin, that'd be great.
Go down to Plymouth. It's quite, all right, it's, it's pretty neat when you, all right.
I mean, the problem, the problem...
We haven't, we haven't had a big crowd of bikes at night.
It's during the day, Sunday afternoon. Right, but she raises a point, the clientele that might come in.
But you know what? The reality is this, and I'm not trying to be mean, this is a business. It's a business district. They have a right to run a restaurant. And you know what? That means a restaurant, and they have a bar, and they do both. It's just not for booze, it's for food. And they're trying to make a go of it, they've been around at least 20 years, right? I don't know. And I mean, and I will admit, they've been very charitable in a lot of events that a lot of people don't know about. So, it's an even balance that we're trying to deal with here. And I have to tell you, if they can't make a go of it, like any business, something else is going to go there. I.e., maybe condos, maybe other something else. But if you don't want that business, then you're subjecting yourself to potentially something else. So, you know, my feeling is, you know, we're trying to help the businesses because it's a business district. And the problem with the Maritime Center, it is not a business district, it's in a residential district, and the town controls it. So, this is a lot different, shall we say. But I am acutely aware of the neighbors around, which is why I'm asking you about Thursday to Sunday, because I'm inclined to say that, I'm willing to accept that. And then, let's see how it goes and test it out, because it's going to be the first foray this year, in over 14 years, that we haven't had outdoor acoustical music. You're not the only one. Tesoro's the other one, and yes, I do anticipate Millworf, or maybe even Rebus, asking the same thing. But again, we need these businesses to succeed, or you won't have them down there, and you're going to have something else, something you might not even like. The devil you know is better than the one you don't, so to speak. So, you know, it's not a residential area. That's, that's not our issue, it was decided back in the 1930s, and they tore down all those beautiful homes. The Foster home was one of the last ones to survive, but all the rest ones are gone, to build a business area, to be able to keep business here. And we know our business is only 3% in our town. So, you know, we talk about trying to support businesses, all I would ask the residents, and I know you disagree with me, and I respect that, but let's test it to see how it goes. It's been 13 years. 2001 is what you said, right? 13 years, we haven't had it. If there are violations, then yes, indeed, we're going to find out about it, because you will call, the police will report it, and they know that. And I'm not trying to say that I'm looking to catch them, I'm just saying, they're responsible adults, business people, who know that they potentially could use, lose something that could help their business. So, you know, it's a matter of trying to work together. So, I guess that's how I see it, and I know you guys may disagree with me, the neighbors here, but I just feel like I'd rather see Thursday to Sunday, see how it goes, and certainly I think there is a point that, you know, you can play it indoors if you're going to have a band, and let's see how that...
We're prepared to do Thursday to Sunday.
Okay. All right, I'm just going to get two more hands that haven't spoken, the woman in the middle, if you'd just identify yourself.
Deborah Jackson, 15, Beaver Dam Road. I'd like to just comment on what Mr. Vignani said about changing the culture of the harbor in your business area. I think that it does change the culture, and I'm living in Beaver Dam Road, I'm up and down Front Street, and certainly come in at 10:00, 11:00 at night, and I see lots of people at TK O'Malley's, they've got a good business going, and I see lots of people staggering out of TK O'Malley's over my 10 years here. So, I'm concerned about adding more business, more music, to have people come, sit around, and drink more. I'm very, very concerned about that. I do think that there should be strict guidelines, to start conservative, conservative guidelines, if the board is going to pass this. And that means your decibel, I don't know how you measure any of that, but amplification is a big deal. Music, if you have music without amplification, I feel better about that, but I know that there's going to be amplification. So, I think that we need to have guidelines, and I don't know how you do that with amplification, but that's up to you people to figure out. I think that that's a big, big thing.
Thank you. This woman over here.
My name is Mary Alice Lauren. I live in the Lebanon Terrace, right beside the Maritime Center, and I do not live in this district. You're correct, the ZMBN noise, and actually, you enjoy it, you hear people laughing on the boats, you hear occasional music from weddings, that's fine. But to have TK's is right there, and I like TK's. My husband and I own business, we are not into business, but I think it's going to change the character of the harbor. Voting is another commerce, an important commerce in this town. If voters aren't going to want to be out there anymore, and feel listening to that at night, you know, they want to sleep, get up the next morning, go somewhere. That's my opinion.
Point of information.
All right, I'll accept one more, then I'm going to...
Point of information, I'm trying to make a comment. There's been a lot of conversation here about what the, I don't know what we're voting on here. What are the, has there been a motion about the hours?
No, there has not.
So...
No, John had mentioned, I think, a woman's response was the weekends, and I, you know, that's, we can set, I suppose, whatever we want to do, it's whether they want to accept it or not. So, and John had raised a point, to a woman's point about weekends, and I think Jeff alluded to, they could, it's all about compromise, and she raised a good point. I don't think the businesses, other than certain, like July 4th, John mentioned, if it falls on a Tuesday night, or July 3rd, you know, that's a big night, but other than that, it's, you know...
Are you 10:00?
We haven't said anything yet. You know, there's been a lot, there's been hours that have been all over the place. So, having said that, if someone wants to try to make a motion, I'll accept a motion. Now, I think I've heard from everyone, unless anyone else has something else to say.
Sure, I'll move to grant an outdoor patio entertainment license to TK O'Malley's for up to three acoustic performers slash singers. From Thursday through Sunday, starting at 12:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m.
Thursday, Sunday, what were those hours?
From 12:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m.
Nothing Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday.
Nothing Monday through Wednesday.
I have a motion. Do I have a second for John's motion?
Can I just point a clarification, John? Holidays, special days such as 4th of July and Memorial Day.
Well, the 4th is on Saturday, or is on Friday, so you're covered for that.
Good.
May, Labor Day, you're covered, because that's on a Monday. As far as Memorial Day, I guess is covered, because that would be a Monday, that's the 24th. So, you're going to be looking at maybe October, or November, and December, and I don't think you're going to be having anything outside during that time period. St. Patrick's Day, if we have the weather we have right now, you may not have anything outside either. So, for the summer, I think you're pretty much covered as far as covering major holidays. And if there's a major holiday other than ones we've talked about, then I'd ask that you come back and ask us for any extension on it.
Tony?
Just for the discussion, I think, my thought is, we should give them the same deal that we gave the Inn.
Which was what, Tony?
Which is, well, there's two, two major differences. It does include, it does include seven, it's Monday through Thursday, but it always ends at 10:00, 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. I mean, there's no reason why these people should not get the same deal that the other people did. The other thing is, though, it says acoustic guitar music and singers. I don't know what three, where three came into play, I don't know where the other instruments came into play, but what we've, what we offered these people is to have an acoustical guitar and singers for their events. And, here it is, here, I don't know if you have a copy of it.
I can just ask.
That's what I would recommend, that we give them, the same exact thing that we give the other people.
It's Monday through Thursday till 10:00, and then it's Friday...
Saturday, Sunday, 12:00 to 10:00. It's the start time that differs.
Right.
I think that, I agree with you as far as consistency, but I think they said they would forego Monday through Wednesday.
I think they, I don't know that they said it.
No, we did, we did, we will forego. I think they conceded, they said, you know what, for the neighbors especially, so they do Thursday through Sunday.
Well, I would keep, I would keep the guitar and the singers and everything else the same.
Tony, excuse me. Like, the bands I have right now, singers, is usually, like the McLaughlin Brothers, is three guys, they all play an instrument. So, is that limiting to like one guitar among...
No, no, guitars and...
Okay, with their instrument.
Yeah, but you're, yeah, so, but there's not drums, there's not, you know, it's, there's not trumpets or whatever, it's, it's just light music, which guitars and singers is what's, is what we gave the other people.
So, point of clarification, that's plugged into an amplifier with speakers as well.
Acoustic, well, I don't think it is.
Point of information is acoustic...
One second, one second.
Out of order.
What do we, what do we have at the Inn? Okay?
It says, description of music to be conducted, acoustic guitar and music singers for events.
All right. Okay.
Listen, this would...
I think somebody may have said something. I've been indoor, I guess I'm not a musician, but I think sometimes the singer has a mic, but the guitarist, the instruments aren't plugged in, is what I think somebody said at one of these meetings.
I don't, I don't, I don't know about it, but I just...
If the electric guitar is not amplified, you don't hear anything. So, I mean, it depends on the equipment, it still depends on the management to make sure what's coming in and what's being played.
I know the instruments are definitely not plugged in the amps. I know that.
For acoustic?
Yeah, for acoustic stuff.
I know nothing about it. So, we just want to be, the idea is to be consistent with what...
That's my thought.
Okay. All right. Now, do you feel that John's motion is consistent with what you'd like?
If we, if he adds in the guitar, whatever the...
What did I say? I said for...
Thursday through Sunday, 12:00 to 10:00, three singers slash instruments.
Just, right. You know, you know what?
Remer in the other words.
I have to apologize, I'm going to rescind that, because you know what I think I was looking at? What was I looking at? I just saw that. Was I looking at...
All right, we don't have a second anyway, if you want to...
You had a second, but you're rescinding, you have voted...
No, that's the one I was reading, I was reading, I'm looking at your...
So, he's withdrawing. If, John, do you want to withdraw your motion?
So, I'll move to withdraw my motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to withdraw it. Okay, now we're starting over.
All in favor?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now you're starting all over.
Before, you want, just hold off while you're looking for, trying to get your thoughts. Jeff, do you want this?
If, it sounds like, it sounds like Tony's about to make a motion that is consistent with the previously issued entertainment, outdoor entertainment license, and two points on that, that's, is that, is that limited to, is that seven days a week, or is that less than seven days a week?
Seven days.
Seven days, different hours.
Okay. All right, so, when John was discussing that issue, I was saying, well, we would limit it from Thursday to Sunday, but it was based upon, that statement was based upon what we had applied for. So, if you're going to be granting it evenly across the board, then we're going to ask for seven days a week, just like what you gave Tesoro.
And what that is, is Monday through Wednesday, 4:00 to 10:00 p.m., Thursday through Sunday, noon time to 10:00 p.m. That's, if I have this, that's the right...
That's the license.
All right. So...
And that would take care of the holidays and all that.
Should be covered for holidays.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion now?
I move to grant TK's the same license that we gave to Sea Smoke.
So, let me try. So, for Monday through Thursday, hours 4:00 to 10:00, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, hours 12:00 to 10:00, three instruments or three singers, no amplification.
No, nothing, why don't I read it? So, I move to offer TK's the same outdoor entertainment license as Sea Smoke, which is Monday through Wednesday from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Okay.
And Thursday through Sunday from 12:00 to 10:00 p.m. For description of music to conduct it, is acoustical guitar music with singers for events.
I have a motion. Two, before I ask for a second, go ahead, Jeff.
All right, two questions on that, is...
Point of order, second, then discussion.
I'll second the motion, so we have discussion.
Thank you. Sorry to go out of order there. Amplification, I just want to make certain that it's okay to be, to utilize microphones for the singers, correct? In that circumstance?
I don't know.
I'm under the impression, yes.
Okay.
But I'm not a music person, so...
And then, and then additionally, the Tesoro is four events, and we would, we would be basically asking for that.
Yeah, scratch the four events.
Okay, thank you.
And if we want to be clear, so, instruments will not be plugged in, but microphones for singers will be.
Okay.
But, that's not...
One second, one second, one second. All right, now I'm more confused now. Alright, now I'm more confused now, so you wanna change your motion again?
No, I, no, I'm trying to define what acoustic means.
Alright, good luck, okay, let me, I make up with that, alright.
Alright, so here's, here's my only, my thoughts on it. I see the thin, the distinction, so everybody understands, okay? What we've done in the past, we said acoustic guitar music, so acoustic guitar, with singers for events. Now, it seems somewhat vague, because when you deal with acoustic, you think it's just somebody with a guitar, and yet there are situations where the guitar is there with a little amp, I guess, or a speaker, and sometimes it isn't. As opposed to, like, a huge electric guitar that's playing loudspeakers. The other issue is, do you put mics into that? So, what we've granted in the past is we said acoustic guitar music to Tesoro. And, you know, I guess it depends how you read it. Reading this, I'd say there's no mics, but that's my prowess of looking at it. And acoustic, I think I'd take acoustic as being without any type of amplification whatsoever, it would just be a guitar. So, but I don't know the answer to that. And what they've asked was three acoustic performers, so what they're asking is saying three performers, not solely music to, not solely guitars. So, it's kind of interesting, and begs the question of whether we have a policy on this. But, in any event, that's what's going on, and that's what we're trying to figure out, so.
We're just trying to make it the same, is what I'm trying to drive home.
Consistent, yeah.
Same play, I'll, I'll-
So, I say we keep the license wording the same, and the only question is, what, what does acoustic mean?
And I, I don't know the answer to that.
No, no, just, just-
Alright, so, I, you know, everything else is the same, that, that's all I know. If we get complaints, you'll get them. We're trying to find a middle ground here, I see a lot of hands still up. I'm not gonna have the answers for you tonight, and I don't know if anyone here has the answers, and I'm sorry if I, I, if you do, I just had to hear from someone else, I, alright. I respect what everyone said about being able to sleep at night, get up the next morning and go to work, and I think we're all trying to find a balance here, alright? So, I have a motion, I have a second.
Can I just, similarly, we could test them both out. Here you have acoustic guitar music, and see who complains about that, and then we could test out the three acoustic performers, and see at the end of the year, which one has more complaints, if any, and if they were. Then you'd say, you know, an idea.
Take odds on that right now.
Guys, I think you heard enough, I mean, we were here for a long time, and, and go back to my original point, to the people in the audience, you know, you may disagree with me or not, but, and to John's point, if these guys are not new here, and they've been around a long time, and I think they really will respect your privacy, and if you have a problem, you know, if you are not satisfied by going to them, you could go to the police station or call us, but, you know, it's, you know, put yourself in our position here, we're trying to, you know, balances.
Can I just try and clarify, why don't we, do we feel comfortable defining acoustic as no amplification of the instruments, but you can sing into a microphone?
Yes, no, you can't, it's, it's, we have, it's like the Milworf amplification, when Matt Brown plays there, doesn't he play his guitar? No, you know, it's a regular guitar, and I think he plays it into a microphone, and that's amplified.
But he sings using a microphone as well.
I don't know the difference.
He does sing using a microphone.
Alright.
As the McLaughlin Brothers would.
Alright, and I, I don't really see the difference. You know, I, I don't know, I'm the first to admit it, I don't know anything about it, you know, but I do know is if it's too loud, and the neighbors have a problem, we'll hear and you'll hear.
Okay.
Alright.
So, how do you want it defined?
Well, we have a motion, a second, I-
It's just as written in the other one?
Right. All those in favor?
What does that mean?
What it means?
Are you gonna find out?
Three, you'll have three people playing, whether they play guitars, or, you know, and I, I don't know, it's just, it's, it's, what's gonna be in the license, acoustic. Tricia, do you know anymore about this stuff?
So, acoustic means nothing. To enhance the sound, it's often plugged into an amplifier. Acoustic means nothing.
Right. That's what we give the other people, alright. Okay.
May I make a suggestion, or?
Go ahead, Jeff.
You know, I guess I'm just kind of piggybacking a little bit off of Tony here, is, the board, I suppose, could take a, have a discussion right now, as to what, what, whether amplification means singing into a microphone or not. And I think that, you know, they could, this board could apply that to the Tesoro license. Now, I haven't seen the Tesoro license, but based upon what you've read, you've read acoustic. I took that to be, to mean instruments. I, I did not hear the word amplification in that license at all. So, if this board wants to kind of discuss right now and decide what it means, you know, to evenly across the board, I mean, I, I don't know if that's even possible, but it's just a suggestion, so that we're not all back here again in two weeks. I mean, because all, all that does is just beg us to come back and decide the issue.
And that's why I said a second ago, but I understand Sean's points, too. If your, if your singer's screaming, then you're gonna get complaints. If your singer has an amp on and is singing softly, but has got the volume up, then it's gonna be, you gotta figure out what loud is, and, you know, somebody mentioned decibels out there, I don't think we're gonna walk around with whatever that instrument is, but, you know, you guys are gonna have to use your judgment, that if, if it's too loud, whether it's singer amplified or singer screaming, if they're complaining, then they gotta sing lower. Is that what you're trying to get at?
Thank you, yes, right, yeah.
So, you wanna vote for this?
That's what-
Point of information, he spoke, he spoke, you have to give us a chance to respond to his, are we saying acoustic, period, as the town administrator?
Yes, we are. No, no, it is, no, exactly, it's gonna be read exactly like the previous license.
Which is acoustic, no amplification.
Correct.
Good, thank you.
It's, alright. We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Repose.
And we can discuss what acoustic means across the board for everybody, 'cause I really don't think it matters, because if it's too loud singing, or too loud amplifying, then it's too loud. So, we'll, we'll talk-
Test it out, we'll see in a year again.
Does their license say no amplification?
No, it just says acoustic.
Just says acoustic.
Well, what is, license wouldn't say that either.
That's not what Mr. Larry asked, he said-
It's been voted.
It's just discussion.
Alright, we are, all, moving on, I guess, we're all set?
Our license reads the same.
Will you read it in the record one more time, exactly?
John, you've read it, right? Alright, Tony?
Someone hand me that piece of-
There it is.
So, I'm not gonna make a motion again, but I'll read what I, what I read the first time. So, and, outturned entertainment from Monday through thir, through Wednesday, from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and Thursday through Sunday from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And the music description would be acoustic music, acoustic guitar music and singers. And we got rid of the events.
As opposed to electric guitar.
Limited to three?
That's correct.
No limit.
No limit.
Guitar, guitars and singers. We got rid of that, we just made it the singer.
So, we don't have a limit of three?
Right.
Total, alright.
There's no limit to three?
There's no-
That's correct, that's what-
On the license.
It's just guitar, you have guitar and singer.
You have it, right?
Point of information.
I have, Dr. Watzke just read.
Your motion says nothing about no amplification?
It says acoustic.
Says acoustic.
So, there's no amplification, we understand that as a, as a rule.
Right. I don't know what acoustic means, so Ted said that once before, and I-
Alright, test it, see how it goes for the year, alright?
Okay.
Well, test to see how it is, we'll, we'll see, we'll-
Thank you, thank you guys.
Thanks, guys.
Next is a discussion, a vote of Clap Road, an acceptance of donation of land. Is Laura here?
The Mr. Wazinski's here, I believe, in the hall.
It's hard, you know?
We gotta do a policy, I gotta do a policy on it, that's what the promise is.
I know nothing about acoustic.
I do. We have a music room, Kevin is a, well, he used to be in a band.
I, I saw your hands go up at the same time.
What does it mean? No amplified mic in the ear.
Yeah, yeah, you might as well come up. Laura, would you please come up? Okay, what we're doing here is an acceptance of about nine acres of land as a gift. This, we just saw this for the first time, this is a project that's been approved by the planning board.
It's been approved, subject to your approval of the town.
Okay, and what it's doing is gifting about, little less than nine acres to the town, to conservation. Not necessarily, from what I found out today. For conservation purposes.
For open space.
For open space, but not care of custody of the Conservation Commission.
That's not what this write-up said.
Is it the person's-
It doesn't actually spell out in the zoning bylaw that it's going to the Conservation Commission, but it's a tricky piece of land, because there's some very pools very close to it, there's other wetlands close to it, so there's, there's about six and a half acres of usable land, including all wetlands buffers. It's also eastern box turtle habitat, and that's one of the things that, it's, it's a very endangered species. So, it's, it's very highly regulated, and I'm not sure how realistic it is to think about putting fields there because of all the permitting, but that's for you guys to decide.
We're not talking about fields, believe me, I'd love talking about fields, and I wish to talk more about fields on the other property way down the road, but this one is, is not. This is a piece of the, the big puzzle that's always presented to us, that abuts the Litchfield property, and the, I'm not sure if it's Bates Road, or whether it's the Carl Litchfield Trail, Carl Pipes Trail.
It's the Carl Pipes Trail.
I'm just trying to figure, I see the portion that you're looking to donate, so there's gonna be development, how many homes, is that, what are we looking at, with a flexible open space?
There's nine, and the land to be donated is back here, Bates Lane is over here.
That's it, right there, that's a puzzle right there.
Do we have one of those down here?
I'm just gonna jump.
I have it.
Please share it, let's share it.
Sorry, Sean, I'll show you, this is it, and here, I can see where it goes, it's in, oh, I can, it's this portion here.
So, Bates Lane is there.
Is it landlocked, Laura?
Yes.
Yes, it is. It's, and I don't mean this in a negative way, but I say it's, it's useless as far as, like, buildable, it certainly is beneficial to further augment all the conservation property that surrounds it. And obviously, if there's some endangered species, it's certainly a benefit to the town to preserve it. And, you know, I have no issues with it, to be candid with you.
Where is it?
Mr. Chairman, may I address this, the board?
I'm Matthew Watzke. I'm Matthew Watzke, I'm here as counsel for Fern Properties, the owner of the property. So, I know that Laura has just provided you with a somewhat larger scale plan, so you can see the, the 8.9 acres, that's, that's to the north and west of the subdivision itself. It's a nine-lot subdivision proposed on 17-plus acres, and the, the choice, the choice that the developer had when laying out this subdivision was either a conventional subdivision that would divide this additional 8.9 acres into portions of the conventional lots, or to design the subdivision as an open space subdivision, where the lots are actually a bit smaller, there's somewhat less impervious surface, all things that both the planning board and the Conservation Commission were in favor of, but to, as part of that, purposefully carve off this 8.9 acre parcel, rather than dividing it into smaller pieces and including it in the individual lots, to save it as an open space parcel and convey it either to the town or, or to another entity, but with conservation restrictions on it. The, the property, because so much of the town of Situate is regulated by the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program as priority habitat for eastern box turtle, this property late is within the, the overwintering habitat, priority habitat of the eastern box turtle, and the permit that's being issued to the development for the subdivision as a whole includes a requirement that this 8.9 acre parcel, regardless of who owns it, will have a permanent conservation restriction on it, with the Natural Heritage Program specifically requiring that it be conveyed pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 40, Section 8(c), to the Conservation Commission for conservation purposes, which in effect makes it conservation land in perpetuity, with, with passive recreation uses perfectly permissible. So, those uses are okay, but it, it is not a property where the Natural Heritage Program's restrictions would allow it to be developed in some way, with, with clearing of significant areas of the property. So, the choice really was conventional subdivision with, with a conservation restriction on this area, but still with the area being owned by the individual lot owners, or choice two, the open space subdivision with this parcel set aside, with the, the same restrictions on the use, and having that conveyed directly to the town, or we could have done a third alternative, which was to have that separate parcel and convey it to a different entity, a conservation group of some sort. My client's preference stated right up at the very beginning of the development proposal was to do it as, as we're proposing now, have it as a separate parcel, rather than having the area kept as part of individual lots, have the property made available for, for public access, and trails, things like that, and we were assuming that the preference of the town would be to have the town own the property. So, that's what we're really looking for, is for the selectmen's endorsement to that.
And when you do something like you're doing, you, our zoning up there is one acre, and you're able to build on 30,000 square foot, is that correct?
That's roughly correct, yes.
Okay.
It's part of the flexible open space, though, don't we give a little relief, because-
That's right.
What we're doing in essence is carving out larger lands that's going to the town for conservation purposes, so we're giving them some zoning relief on being able to cluster nine homes. And this is, again, it's interesting, because what you're trying to do is put more density in to try to preserve open space, you know, begs the question, and no offense, Attorney Watzke, whether or not they'd be able to build on the back lot to begin with, but regardless, if they were to try it, or somebody were, I mean, you do have an endangered species, the box turtle, that's what it is?
That's right.
You know, it's, it's certainly something worth preserving ultimately, and perpetuity, I'd rather go to the town conservation than, say, some private conservation trust, you know, who may or may not be worth looking at it, but, anyway.
So, answer me this, John, if, if we didn't take it, are we foregoing tax dollars? I mean, if they, if they left it with the owners, and the owners owned it with the same restrictions that the town's gonna own it with, would there be tax dollars affiliated with?
They'd have to, I presume, re, redesigned it, because this right now would have to belong to an association, unless an association's been created, which I don't know if it is or not, then they'd also, what would do is, they'd probably then deed it to another conservation trust, that trust would take it over, and then-
And they don't have to pay taxes on it?
I think because of their, probably if they're drafted as a 501(c) or something, it'd be no-
It'd be land of low value anyway, even if it was redesigned, because of the wetlands involved.
Nominal.
So, it'd be a nominal difference to me.
Is it that, it is that way right now, I imagine, right? And, and like I said, when you look at the map that we have, it's, it's another, it's, it's a, it is a piece to a bigger puzzle that we've filled in pretty well, that's it right there.
So, is that this, on this?
Correct.
I think so.
It is. What's too bad is, with these potential nine homes, they would certainly like to have some form of playground down the street, I think, personally, but, you know, that's another issue for another day.
Alright, any other questions, comments?
Well, I guess the only question that I'd wanna get resolved is, who's gonna, is the town gonna be the owner of the land, or is the Conservation Commission gonna be the owner, you said Conservation Commission a second ago, I mean, the one thing that it could be is a bargaining chip for a piece of property later, if you had to tran, you know, sometimes you have to transfer.
It, if it goes, what it would be is town would own it, but with a conservation restriction on it. So, the only thing I was looking at was, in the center, based on your, your, your plan from your engineer, there's some uplands, it looks like, at least-
About half of it?
About in the middle of it, if I'm not mistaken, and my question was, I know at one point we were looking for a stack pipe, was it?
Stand pipe.
Stand pipe, and whether or not we'd be able to get in there, if need be, to put pressure, water, Kevin's not here, that's one thing, but that was the only thing I saw, or it'd be nice to have a cell tower if we needed revenue, but, but-
No, but we, if we did sign another piece of property, you know, sometimes the town can switch it with something else, if the town owns it as opposed to Conservation?
No, once it goes into conservation, you'd have to get a special act of legislature to get it out of conservation, so every, every parcel of town that goes into conservation restrictions, you cannot take it back out, and then frankly, it's extremely difficult to get the legislature to turn around and say, you know what, we're gonna take it out of conservation.
So, let me ask a question to Tricia, if you don't mind, is, would by, by doing this tonight, is it going in the care and custody of conservation, or is it not?
Yes, it is, it's for conservation purposes, I think there are opportunities for the board to discuss that with other parcels, but because you already have an endangered species there, and it's already so wet, I don't think it makes sense to do it in this case.
I agree.
The Conservation Commission has already accepted it, which might have been a little premature before this board acted, but I think in this case, it makes sense for it to be under their custody.
Alright.
This might be a silly question, but is there any burden on the town for the endangered species?
No.
Turtle hater.
Heard a story-
Motion, I'll take a motion.
No, not turtles, if it was clovers, it would be a-
Merely to keep it as open space.
I'll move to accept the conveyance of 8.9 acres of land at 214 Clap Road on behalf of the town of Situate.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Ace will stay in, Laura.
Moving on, under our next-
I want my map back.
Um, next is a discussion and vote for the polling hours, the annual town election. I think we got, Kathy's been sitting here patiently, I think we got a letter from the governor.
Go ahead.
Giving us his blessing for our May thirty first election. That took a while, Kathy, didn't it?
Yes, it did, 'cause it had to go through the House of Representatives, then it had to go through the Senate, and then it made its way back to the governor's desk, so-
Sat on his desk for a few days, and-
Well, he was down in Puerto Rico or the Dominican Republic on vacation, or, but yes, we're all set for the thirty first. We have one contested race on the ballot, which is library trustee. It's vote for two for three years, and there's three people running. We have two incumbents, Karen Cantfield and Chris Muraki, and Virginia Ayers is the new, the new person that is running for that position. And we have the two non-binding questions. So, other than that, I felt that the polling hours, you know, could be set from eight to five PM with no problem. I expect the absentee ballots in three weeks before the election, so if polling hours are a problem for a few people, they could certainly come in and vote over the counter absentee.
And they're available when, until when?
Usually three weeks before the election is by law. I'm hoping I get to, I get them a little sooner. They've been ordered, so.
Move to approve the polling hours for the annual town election to be held on Saturday, May thirty first, two thousand and fourteen, be set for the hours eight AM to five PM.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Kathy, thank you.
Now to vote the annual town election warrants.
Move to approve the Situate town warrant for the two thousand and fourteen annual town election to be held on Saturday, May thirty first, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, okay. Now, can we discuss some dates for our annual retreat? Alright.
What are you looking at?
Under new business. Right?
Yeah.
Okay. I can only speak for myself, but I think I'm around all the time, it's something we've done. What have we done, two or three years?
I'm available every day. I'm a big loser.
Be the fifth.
I'm sorry?
To be the fifth, yeah.
Real time goes by quick.
How about in two weeks?
I think Rick Murray's just gone for a few days.
Tricia's gone, Rick's gone, alright.
No, no, you, you, I can work around the board.
So, why don't we, can we, can you throw out, like, three dates, and then we can email back? I unfortunately do not know my schedule.
So, are we looking at weekends?
That's what I was just gonna say, Saturday morning might work the best.
Saturday morning, like, seven or something?
Yes.
It works because of scheduling, and I know a lot of people, I'm like, between the kids' events and everything else.
And that could be May or June. What, what is the timeframe?
You guys are with the young, you know, the baseball and soccer and everything, what, does, do those programs end?
No.
June? No, then they go right into summer program, so.
Are we looking more at June right now?
Well, Tricia, you come back when?
June would be better.
June, how about Saturday morning in June? Uh, June sixth is graduation Friday night, so how about a Saturday morning?
Do May thirty one, June seven, June fourteen, June twenty one.
May thirty one's not gonna work very well.
May thirty one.
It's the election, is it?
Yeah, it is. Can't do that.
At seven AM? Oh, the polls are open at eight.
It's gonna be an hour. So, and then June seventh, I think the sixth is graduation, if, I, I don't, I don't know if that matters.
Is that the party?
All night party is, um, yeah, you'll be there, so you'll be up all night the night before.
Fourteen, twenty one, twenty eight.
Right.
Okay, so we'll email, mail one day.
Alright, so I'll email the date, June dates, not the seventh, and we'll see what the consent is.
We'll wait the fifteenth and the twenty first, so, and get my schedule sent.
That work for you?
We're gone the fifteenth and twenty first.
You are?
Fifteenth through the twenty first.
So, you can't do the twenty first.
My preference would be the seventh and twenty eighth.
Well, seventh would be tough to tell.
Either one's been for me, then.
Twenty eighth is on Saturday.
Twenty eight, twenty eight.
Okay, that'll work.
I gotta check, but that, that-
Twenty eight, okay.
I don't think I can do the fourteenth.
Okay.
That's all. If you could check, that'd be great, one of those dates.
Alright.
I'll send out a confirmation, just so you can double check.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Other business, I'll start with you, John, if you-
Sure, quickly, I just wanna say that anybody driving down Jericho Road looks great. They are tearing up the sidewalk, they're putting in the bike path, and they've got cur-, uh, granite curbing. I have to tell you, it's, it looks, looks better already, and I think it's gonna be really well-accepted by a lot of people who use that, and so just, I don't know what the timing of it is, I'm assuming another month, but I think we'll have it certainly by the end of June, and I, I think people will be pleasantly surprised, it's a really great project, so I'm looking forward to that. The other thing I was gonna say is, I wanted to give kudos to Donna Bangert and all the people involved in Shipshape Day. Again, another phenomenal event, the town coming out and cleaning up. I don't know what the tonnage was, I'd like to know what we have, I don't know, Tricia, if you have that information available right now, but again, it's when the town comes together, cleans up, and it looks like there are more people involved, and maybe there was less debris, I don't know, but it just seemed like there was a lot of cleanlinessier areas, and just good for this town.
It takes three days to clear up the bags. We get that much.
I went down.
And the wind didn't help, so we had to put a crew on overtime to get them, 'cause they were blown.
And I will say, today, when I was driving down Driftway, obviously, somebody was hired to go and pick stick the side of the golf course, but they're getting all the debris from all the stuff that flies off trucks and cars, and picks it up. I mean, that turns into a real pit in the town, because things are flying off left and right, and I'm glad to see that, 'cause it, it is the gateway into the town, as well as the, the way to leave town, but aside from that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Jump over to Marty.
Yeah, I just, uh, North Situate is having a, on May tenth, they're having a, kind of like a little block party down there, from two to five PM. They're gonna have things for kids, and they're gonna have a wine tasting, and should be a good event. Hopefully, they welcome spring finally. That's on May tenth, two to five.
Who's sponsoring that?
Um, it's the, it's, Anne, is it the, is it the merchants association, North Situate?
No, actually, this was the brainchild of Tracy-
Colomico, yeah.
Yes, at the, um-
Still Waters.
Still Waters, and I think she's a jack from Wilbur's, and, you know, trying to get some people, young people into North Situate.
Right, involved, yeah. They don't need an event permit for that, do they? Tricia, if they're just out in the, that parking area there?
I don't think so, no.
No, okay. But they'll have face painting and different things, it should be a good event. Hopefully, we'll have good weather. That's, that's all I have.
Tony, do you have anything?
Um, not, not much, just a couple things, just, people beware, it's, uh, spring is gonna come eventually, and you've got baseball season starting and soccer season starting, so drive slowly around those fields. The high school baseball and lacrosse seasons are in full bloom, baseball team's on a little roll here, so if you have an afternoon, swing over and watch a game. And the only other note is, this Friday is first Friday in the harbor, so go down there and enjoy the festivities, it's always busy and happening, I think Friday's supposed to be a beautiful day, so go enjoy it and help the local merchants.
And they're gonna have music at TK's, right on the sidewalk.
Yes, they are, right.
John, anything else, or you're all set?
Acoustic, yeah. Um, I was just gonna say, I wanted to thank Amber Bachi, just provided us that, the Southshore Coalition of the MAPC, which is the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, is having a legislative breakfast on Friday, May ninth, two thousand and fourteen, obviously, from eight thirty till ten, at the Situate Maritime, that's at one nineteen Edward Foster Road, all are[1570.83]